Fair and just to see any companies open and to see any opportunities for me to apply to.
Right now, I see people of all ages, people of all walks of life. This is a resource that's very valuable for our community and our community members. Wonderful opportunity here, guys.
You know, when I first started applying for the job, we didn't have the internet. So they couldn't do a background search on site or, you know, all the things that they need to do. Here today, it's very different. There are rooms you can walk in, do an interview, wait 30 minutes, and they'll tell you to come to work on Wednesday or come to work next week Saturday. And that includes people who have a record, a criminal justice record, people who may have been laid off, or people who have a job but think they can get a better job.
The economy right now, you know, and for the next three years, we don't know where it's going to go. We really don't know. It's unstable. Precisely for that reason is why we need events such as this that are no cost to the community members. And it's just all gain. No one loses here. It's all gain here at this event.
The national government is just doing everything they can to ruin our economy. We say, don't look at the news. Come talk to the people who are actually hiring to see if there's an opportunity for you.
At this moment in time, it's very difficult to find a job, especially like in something I want to do. But what I would tell you, stay confident. Don't stop trying. Always put your name out there. I've been rejected from thousands of jobs and I've been applying to 4,000 of the jobs. So just don't get knocked down. Don't get too low on the lows. Don't get too high on the highs. And then when you get your foot in the door, just make sure you're doing everything you're supposed to to keep succeeding.
Look, this is what we say to everybody. If you believe in yourself and you work hard today, we promise you, promise you, promise tomorrow will be better than yesterday and the day after that will be better than today. And so we just say, keep pressing. Wake up every morning, ten toes down. Get out there, get at it. The world needs you.
The Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation unveiled a new lineup of scholars for 2025. These chosen winners are headed to college and sure to become future academic All-Stars.
Today is very exciting. It's a very rewarding day for us as we think about awarding yet another class of scholars to our LADF Legacy Scholarship Program. We started this scholarship on the heels of the 2022 MLB All-Star Game that we hosted here at the stadium. And to have made that commitment then and to be sticking to doing 10 new scholars every single year since then is very, very special.
Favorite baseball!
I was really excited, a little shocked. I think I was going to get picked. I was really hopeful and excited because it gave me an opportunity to pay for college and pursue a higher education.
Heidi Lopez for the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta going to UCLA. So we got USC and then UCLA. We have a major league, major league chemistry. Congratulations, Heidi.
As I went through and then gone through different parts of my life, understanding financial, understanding how the world really works, understanding what it's like to be on your own and stuff like that. Education is the key to really getting yourself through that and getting yourself back on your feet and, you know, making something out of yourself.
It means everything, to be honest. Like, college already is very expensive and I'm from a low-income community. So I was a little nervous going to college, especially a UC, and having to pay a lot of debt afterwards because college isn't cheap. And this scholarship paying for anything is amazing.
When I think about my own experience and the fact that I get to sit here as the CEO of the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation, I know that scholarships afforded me the opportunity to attend college, but also to have access and opportunity to networks and experiences like these that lead to success in life. And so it's extremely special to be a part of this. It's sort of the passion behind a lot of what I do. But I know that many of our students today are sitting in the same shoes and that it will help change the trajectory of their families.
Education is important to everybody, you know, and it's fun and it's exciting to represent that. And it's exciting to acknowledge the people that are coming behind you that are doing the same things that you did, that you were striving for. So it's all about giving back, really, honestly. And that's what I truly enjoy the most.
I'm excited. I can't lie. I've never had a Dodgers tour. So I'm very excited. And to be honored is amazing, especially by the Dodgers. So yeah, I'm very excited.
Mayor Karen Bass celebrated 818 Day marking the contributions of all those in the 818 area code. The annual spotlight on the San Fernando Valley and northern Los Angeles took place on August 18. Bass visited local businesses and held a roundtable with her new Valley Advisory Board, comprised of local leaders from the San Fernando Valley. According to Bass, 818 Day highlights all that makes the valley special and recognizes the neighborhoods, communities, and businesses that make Los Angeles a great city. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. Councilmember Tim McOscar, LA Harbor Commissioners, and the Port of Los Angeles welcomed the public to the reopening ceremony of the Fanfare Fountain in San Pedro. The festivities kicked off with a musical performance, followed by officials launching the fountain's first public show since it closed for repairs. The Fanfare Fountain creates a dancing water show using recycled water, which jets up to 100 feet into the air. The Fanfare Fountain at Gateway Plaza is open from 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. with water displays every 30 minutes. For more information, visit lawaterfront.org. LA City Council has voted to designate two Terminal Island buildings as historic cultural monuments. These are the last two remaining buildings of a Japanese-American community that played a pivotal role in LA's fishing industry. Before World War II, more than 3,000 Japanese-Americans lived on Terminal Island, which had a busy commercial center on Tuna Street. According to Councilmember Tim McOscar, the buildings are a tangible link to the Japanese-American story. The Terminal Islanders Preservation Initiative said protecting these structures will ensure Japanese-American stories of immigration and resilience will be formally commemorated. For more information, visit cd15.lacity.gov.
All the world's a stage for these Angelinos. Summer Camp at Lincoln Heights Youth Arts Center introduced the campers to musical instruments, movement, and visual arts, and it all led to a stage performance for their families.
Today was the final culminating event for the Lincoln Heights Youth Arts Center's Summer Camp for the summer of 2025. We had a very large showcase go on today consisting of all of the campers, including multiple disciplines that they learned throughout the entire summer. So at the youth center here in Lincoln Heights, what we do is we try to teach the kids as many different disciplines of art as we can to create well-rounded, creative individuals to lead us through the future.
Yo los veo muy contentos de sí mismos por empujarse a hacer cosas que a lo mejor antes no habían hecho. Romper esa zona de confort de decir, okay, voy a intentar algo que no he hecho y lo voy a hacer. Obviamente, al principio hubo miedo, especialmente en el teatro musical, porque hay que cantar, hay que bailar, hay que proyectar. Entonces, son muchas cosas que algunos han hecho, pero otros no. Entonces fue un bello balance entre estas dos cosas como comunidad, juntarnos y experimentar juntos y hacer arte. Yo los vi súper motivados. Me dio mucha alegría poderle dar un instrumento a un niño, trabajar con ellos en el ritmo y gozar. Yo vi que ellos se esforzaron para hacer algo que antes no habían hecho, lo cual es muy, 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 muy valioso. Y yo muy contento y ellos más.
I learned music in Mr. Pablo's class. And I also learned art in Miss Elise's class. I learned yoga in Miss Joy's class. I also learned some stuff with Mr. Josiah. I feel happy with them because they help me when I feel sad and they're nice to me. We did a performance and our whole family got to see it. It was really nice. I liked it.
I would like to thank all of the families that came out today to celebrate the accomplishments of their young campers. They have been having so much fun with us the last five weeks. And we went on two beautiful field excursions, one to the Autry, where they got to see contemporary art done by native indigenous artists. And we also took them to the Getty. So there they saw, of course, classical art by different European artists. And it's important that we expose our kids to all of the arts and to show them that they themselves create art and they matter.
Yo creo que lo más importante que están llevando es esa confianza en sí mismos de yo puedo crear y yo puedo soñar. El tema era Dare to Dream, y ellos atrevieron y lo van a lograr.
Outdoor movies in summertime are a SoCal staple. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and the city's Department of Recreation and Parks have taken it to a new level. Let's dive into a movie night at the pool.
Today, we are at Handsome Dam. This is our summer movie night. We're showing Moana 2 today. It's a great event for families to come out together, especially in this heat. Enjoy the sun, enjoy the water, and have a good time.
We've got thousands, not hundreds, but thousands of families out here frolicking in the water or hanging out on the sandy beach. We've got food trucks. We've got activities for everybody in the family. But more importantly, people get to enjoy the movie if they want from the pool.
This event is for everybody, right? That's matter if you're six months or 106, it's for everybody. You know, this facility is so large. Capacity is like over 3,000. We have two water slides. We have a wicket, the obstacle course right in the middle of the pool. There's food trucks, there's DJ. We have paddle boats in the recreation lake. Also behind me, we have a different community booth. You know, we want to make sure that you come and see what we have to offer, right?
I hope that everyone gathers a sense of community and knowing that there's so many people like them and so many people who support them and come out and just enjoy events like this. And these events are put on for the community and for you.
I'm happy when I see members of my community. They're excited to be here and appreciative of the opportunity to come together, especially during a heat wave, to be able to take some time off, to do something free with the whole family and cool off in the pool. And it's in their backyard. I'm just happy to be in a position to offer my community these types of events.
A unique program with a full slate of fun and activities for the whole community. It has to be Summer Night Lights. We're heading to the Harbor City Rec Center to find out more.
We are here at Harbor City Recreation, Summer Night Lights, Harbor City Recreation Summer Night Lights Grand Finale Celebration.
Summer Night Lights is an activity that we Recreation and Parks collabed with through the summer.
For us, it's really more about community engagement, about creating safe spaces for community to occupy during the summer months. We offer food, activities, arts and crafts, raffles, giveaways, music, an assortment of things to try to draw the community in during the summer.
Summer Night Lights is a great opportunity for families to come out with their kids. They have free activities for the kids. They do crafts, they do sports.
The community has responded in an amazing way. They show up in numbers, they show up in droves. I mean culturally, we see many different types here, all sorts of different families. So for the community, they look forward to it. I hear about four months in advance when the Summer Night Lights coming back.
It's a good way to keep kids off the street and keep them active and in a good community, away from gang life and away from danger, just being here with all the fun activities that they have.
We have so many different ethnicities and people from different communities that come here specifically to enjoy our classes, to enjoy our sports. People from Long Beach and Torrance and Carson come out here because of the things that we offer and how diverse and how welcoming that we are as a staff and as a community are. So I say, come, please join us. We have so many things to offer here.
Beautiful. I don't know if we use that word well enough to explain what programs like this do for people. This is a beautiful sight. This is a beautiful feeling. It enriches lives across the board. So for me, I would just add that as long as we can continue to have this, we'll continue to strive.
Mayor Bass, Council President Harris Dawson, and Councilmember Soto Martinez showed their support for South LA Pride. It's a special celebration for the community when they can feel fully accepted in their own neighborhood.
Today, we're at South LA Pride. This is the seventh year in a row we've done it, to beautiful Michelle Obama Park. The whole community of elected officials is out in South LA.
The wonderful thing about our city and our state is that there's some issues that are just not debatable. And nobody's debating the rights of the LGBTQ+ community. Nobody's debating that in our city.
It's really great to see South LA, South Central have its own pride. I grew up in this part of the city and it's changed so much over the years. And we know pride has been celebrated in other parts of the city. But to bring it here in the community where I grew up from is just extra special.
When I say LA, you say pride. LA, LA, LA.
Unity in this event shows that we can be who we are, love who we are, and still acknowledge and accept everybody. This is a space for everybody, children, young, old, allies across the board. This is what pride is. Pride is not just about an orientation or identity. It's about being who you are at all times.
Oh my God, there's so many things changing from people being able to express themselves to people just enjoying life in general. But before, there were times where we were discriminated. We weren't able to be ourselves. We wanted to express ourselves. So here we are in 2025 and we're making it better.
This shows the development of the community, both the LGBTQ community and allies. Because so many allies are here today to support each other and do so in public.
We're going through so much in the city right now. Events like this remind us that solidarity, community is what we need to do more than ever.
We going through some tough times. Whoa! This is the eighth month of the year. I feel like we've been through three years. But you know what, though? We not going to let anybody divide us. We're not going to let anybody divide us, whether you're talking about immigration or whether you are talking about people's human rights and civil rights. And that's what the issue is today. That, to me, is what pride is all about.
It's just another reminder, love your neighbor, whoever your neighbor is. Make sure that you look out for them. And we got to stand together now, tomorrow, and forever.
There's something unique about a space dedicated to young people, especially when it also nurtures growing self-expression and creativity. While the building is almost 100 years old, it's young Angelinos who benefit at the Canoga Park Youth Arts Center.
The Canoga Park Youth Arts Center is an after-school music and art program operated by the Department of Cultural Affairs of the City of Los Angeles. We offer music and visual arts classes to youth in the area, mostly from 6 to 17. However, we also have pre-K classes to introduce young children to music. All the teachers here have been involved in the arts their whole lives. We serve about 200 students per week when we have our class sessions. We are located in a historic building off of Sherman Way. So this historic building was first built in 1929 as the first operator-assisted phone company in the San Fernando Valley. After the building was abandoned by the phone company, it fell into disrepair. The city did purchase the building. It was restored because Proposition K allocated funds to provide programming for youth. So this is a dedicated youth arts center. During the year, local schools walk to us during their school day to supplement or to include an arts program which they may not be able to receive at their school. The importance of arts education, I don't think can be overstated. I think by now, hopefully, everybody knows that arts education helps children to work together in groups. It helps them to focus, critically think. Self-expression is also incredibly important. Creativity and also it could be a path to a career for many young people. For example, all of the staff here are involved in the arts, in their art form, outside of teaching here. We have a lot of kids that come here as, you know, six-year-olds and then they go all the way through the program until they age out of it. And they have good memories, they come back. So we see how the arts is shaping these kids, having a healthy society, having healthy investment in the arts. We have several ways of getting into contact with us. We have an Instagram page, @canogaparkyoutharts. We have a Facebook page, Canoga Park Youth Arts Center.
Bye, everyone.
Join the Los Angeles Public Library for an LA-made event in collaboration with VC Archives. VC Archives is one of the largest photo and moving image archives on the Asian Pacific experience in America. On Sunday, September 7, the event Stories and Conversations Across Generations will celebrate the cultural legacies passed down through Asian Pacific families. The afternoon will feature a curated selection of short films from both new and seasoned filmmakers, followed by a multi-generational conversation on collective memory and cultural resilience. Head to the Central Library's Mark Taper Auditorium for Stories and Conversations Across Generations on Sunday, September 7 at 2:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. The LA City Department of Cultural Affairs invites art enthusiasts to the William Grant Still Art Center for the Art of the Covenant and the Mushroom Symphony Art Exhibit. LA-based, self-taught visual artist Ja O'Ra is known for transforming organic materials, especially mushroom coffee, into abstract visual narratives. Painted on raw cotton canvas and rooted in Afrofuturism, O'Ra's body of work invites viewers to awaken their senses, honor resilience, and reimagine what's possible. Head to the William Grant Still Art Center to view the Art of the Covenant and the Mushroom Symphony exhibit, opening September 6 through November 15. For more information, go to wgsac.wordpress.com. The Los Angeles Public Library presents Looks Like a Home to Me: Inside the Progressive Art Studios. This exhibition celebrates the remarkable achievements of artists working in progressive art studios in California and across the country. Providing a supportive studio environment for contemporary art has allowed for the inclusion of artists with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Visit the Getty Gallery at LA's Central Library for Looks Like a Home to Me, now through December 7. Open daily with varying hours. For more information, visit lapl.org/events/exhibits. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao. And from all of us here at LA this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. And we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA this week. Okay, good morning. Welcome to yet another meeting of the L.A. City Council. Today is... not yet? Oh, we need one more?
No, we have people.
Oh, we're waiting on... Okay, we're waiting for one more minute before we can get started. Okay, great. Welcome to another meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. I am Nithya Ramen, Assistant President Pro Tem of the City Council, running today's meeting. Public comment will be taken in person in the council chamber only for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Girado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Part, Price, Ramen, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Okay, let's move to our first order of business.
Approval of minutes of September 2nd, 2025.
Okay, Councilmember Girado moves. Councilmember Hutt seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Great, Councilmember Price moves. Councilmember McCosker seconds, next. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Yes, Madam President. Item 1 is an item noted for public hearing. Items 2 through 30 are items which public hearings have been held. For item 7, the Los Feliz Neighborhood Council submitted a community impact statement in support of this matter. For item 30, the Energy and Environment Committee report has been submitted and is available online under Council File 241006. Items 31 through 36 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, do you have any items you'd like to call special today? Councilmember Girado.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call item 23 through 28 for a separate vote.
23 through 28 for a separate vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any other items? And I would like to hold item 22 on the desk for... to be voted on after public comment. Okay, any other specials today, members? Okay, Madam Clerk, what is next?
Madam President, the council may now vote on items 20... I'm sorry, items 2 through 21, as well as 29 and 30.
Okay, 2 through 21, 29, and 30. Okay, please open the roll on these items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Madam President, there is a request to send item 30 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. What's next?
Madam President, council may now go into public comment now.
Okay, great, thank you, members. We are now moving on to public comment on agenda items noted for public hearing and items for which public hearings have not been held. Public comment will be taken in person in the council chamber only. Mr. City Attorney, can you please explain the speaking rules to members of the public who are in council chamber wishing to speak today?
Yes, Madam President. To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items number 1 and items 31 through 36. So again, the items open for public comment on the agenda are items number 1 and 31 through 36. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. A couple more announcements, if I could have the interpreters make this first one aloud to the room, please. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret. Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
Okay, great. And since there are so few public speakers today, I'm just going to ask anyone who wants to make public comment to move to your left side, and the sergeants will guide you to the podium. And the city attorney will help you make your comments. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hello, I'm speaking to general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Excellent. Hello, I'm Arndt Peter Casteline. I'm a resident of CD... CD1?
Hold on just a second. We'll get the timer going, don't worry. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Arndt Peter Casteline. I'm a resident of CD1, and I'm also the L.A. Chapter Chair for the Equal Vote Coalition, where we advocate for a voting method called STAR voting. The Charter Commission has nominated both STAR voting and rank choice voting as topics for their further study, so today I want to share why I recommend STAR voting over ranked choice voting. Under STAR voting, voters would give each candidate a score from 0 to 5. This way voters get to express their full and honest opinion on their ballot, and that allows them to have equal influence in the election, regardless of how many candidates are running under their party. I used to be an RCV supporter, but then switched after learning more. Both STAR and RCV offer expressive ballot and positive campaigning. We saw that in New York City most recently. But RCV still has many of the problems under the current system. In particular, there's still vote splitting and spoiler candidates. I built a website at rcvchangelaska.com, breaking down how this impacted Alaska's election and how GKEP came back in subsequent elections.
Next speaker.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
This is a general comment.
Okay, and if you need to adjust the microphone, you can. I don't know how it'll go, but you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Bruce Dixon with Equal Dot Vote and STAR Voting. In a few months, the CRC Commission will likely recommend a voting method for district elections. The goal of elections ought to be locating a center of the majority's preference for change. Anyone reading electionscience.org understands there is no perfect voting system. All methods score under 100%. Yet, two methods continue to score highest: approval voting and STAR voting. What about ranked choice? Seventeen states have now banned RCV. Also, Germany's Supreme Court ruled RCV unconstitutional because of non-monotonicity. That's big in election science. Published academic papers show RCV only a slight improvement over plurality voting. We welcome anyone interested in improving the health of elections.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next speaker, please make your way to the podium.
General comment?
General public comment. So you have one minute. Go ahead.
I want to emphasize that I am asking you to take action at individuals, not as a group. I'm not calling for a council vote. Just because the person beside you is slacking off doesn't mean that you shouldn't represent your constituents by writing to the governor. People know very well that they are victims of sickening crimes. They know very well that the police are deliberately ignoring these crimes. People know very well that they are being intimidated from coming forward, and they know very well that you are refusing to protect them by demanding actual oversight.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public general... general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, I'm Taylor. I'm a protester. I'm District 1 as well. I came here to talk about two things. One, Jim McDonald, and two, there is a fence at 535 Newfoundland Street that DHS put up. Let's talk about Jim for a second. I went to the Police Commission meeting, and I told him about our 24-hour protest and how LAPD has been a little less than warm and welcoming. And literally immediately after the Police Commission meeting, LAPD has pretty much nonstop, pretty heavily been on our butts out there. So I want to put that on the record. I know it takes two-thirds of you to remove him. Let's work on that. And then DHS and ICE put up a gate around 535 Newfoundland Street because we're protesting there. It is a hazard. People can't walk by as freely as they used to. It takes up about half the sidewalk. And now they're macing us because of it and tear gassing us because of it. Just putting it on the record.
Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak on items 1, 31, 32, 33, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have...
Yeah, sorry, Speaker. Could you also just make sure that you're moving the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you so much.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Okay, all items on this agenda look like a kindergarten class. Put it together as none of these items are of any transformative significance due to the incompetence of these $20,000-per-month council circus clowns. Number 1 is for corrupt sleazy ma-queasy Dawson and indicted current Price, currently on trial. Corrupt current Price, putting a lien on citizens' property at 6212 Corbin Avenue for nuisance abatement costs in hopes of Dawson and Price confiscating the citizens' property via current Price's family business in future, instead of assisting the property owner. All when the incompetence of all these city council clowns sitting here because 16,000 city structures to burn. In my opinion, these motions should state that the sleazy council is the nuisance instead of the property owner. Further, in my opinion, indicted with additional corruption charges and out on bail and on trial... trial corruption, Current Price should not be allowed to represent the city by voting on any item. I demand that sleazy Dawson and on trial Current Price be investigated by the Attorney General regarding this item. Item 31, 32, and 33 are all for properties to be removed from the REAP program. In my opinion, these property owners should be reimbursed from Current Price's attempts to confiscate these properties through his wife's business. In my opinion, sleazy corrupt incompetent Dawson and indicted on trial Current Price should not be allowed to vote because Price is being convicted and Dawson is indicted for corruption. In my opinion...excuse me. In my opinion, these REAP items are indicative of the twisted priorities of this sleazy council. When black women are only 4% of the population, but nearly 50% of the aggravated assaults and rapes in Los Angeles, this is our black leadership at these 20,000-per-month black clowns and all the rest, too. The only have these REAP accounts on the agenda while items of thousands are homeless. In my opinion, all these REAP items should include some homeless solutions, but these incompetent 20,000-per-month clowns have none. General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Public, when you hire clowns, you get these circus of corrupt incompetence. Sleazy Marquezi Dawson, Asian, also Lee, nonconformative items on today's agenda. Oh, goodness. CD 8, the highest homeless rate, the highest unemployment rate in the entire United States. Over 12.5% CD 8 is a near-complete food desert. Sleazy Dawson has spent over $10 million on luxury offices for himself while items of thousands are homeless. Dawson has appointed by...was appointed by petty pinkface corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Kluklukskorion, a legendary fool. Criminally insane Current Price has been indicted on additional charges for voting on his wife's city contracts and polygamy. $1 billion budget emergency, homeless epidemic emergency, $275 billion fire damage emergency, and sleazy among general comment, the...and these...
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Next speaker, and you can start this individual's time because he's clearly delaying.
May I finish my banana, please?
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
I was just trying to, under the ADA being compliance of eating my banana, because...
So this is not on the agenda? This is your first and only warning? If you stray off topic again, I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Listen, Mr. Attorney, with your transparency bullshit, what about what Bob Bloomingfield is doing regarding the North Corbin Avenue street? What is he doing there? Why is the Jew enforcing people through your so-called broken window of transparency, not behind the doors where you do your dirty work, putting a lien against this individual at this property located at 6212 North Corbin Avenue? You know why? It's for your comment and what you said about me right now. You initially attacked me on my First Amendment.
Okay, not on the agenda. You're welcome to speak to it during general, and now you're on general public comment. You were previously warned. You have one minute. Go ahead.
So now, I'm going on to item number of transportation, fool. Hey, fool. Transportation. Did you know that the City of Los Angeles has a project to spend? And don't get me wrong, maybe I don't know how to read numbers. Help me out, smoke and scan. Is that millions of dollars for a project in just one black area? What about all the other black neighborhoods that need their projects repaired, Mr. Transparency Attorney? Aren't you the one hiding behind closed doors illegally conducting bad business on transparency of our transportation? That makes you a criminal, supporting these type of actions, Mr. Jonathan Philip Grote on item 23 and item 24, you dumbass. Yeah, look at it. Yeah, sip it down, fool. In my last two seconds, fuck you.
Nope, you were already warned. You were on general public comment just now. I would also remind you, you're on probation, so please vacate the podium.
And take your banana peel, sir.
Mr. Herman, take your banana with you. You can't leave your garbage on the podium.
Littering is not permitted here.
In fact, this is your first and only warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. You're here every day. You try and break the rules every day. Vacate the podium. And I believe, Madam President, we were told that there are no other speakers. And I believe we've exhausted...
There are some individuals who came in later. If anyone is here who didn't hear our announcement initially, who wants to make public comment, please make your way to the left side of the chamber. Going once, going twice? Okay, I think at this point we can close public comment. Okay, Madam Clark, what items can council vote on now?
Madam President, council may now vote on items 1 as well as 31 through 36.
We can also add item 22 to that.
As well as 22.
So that's 1, 22, 31 through 36. Let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay, what's next?
Next would be items 23 through 28, and that was called special by Councilmember Girado for a separate vote.
Okay, great. If Councilmember Girado doesn't have any comments, let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes, 3 noes.
Okay, great. What is next on the agenda, Madam Clark?
Madam President, council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Councilmember Hernandez, please.
I have a couple of announcements. Good morning, everyone. What a wonderful day to be here all together. My first announcement is that we have started Latino Heritage Month. We have an art exhibit curated by Artura Art Gallery on the 3rd floor Bridge, where the theme of this year is Viva la Resistencia. I'm also the madrina of El Grito this year, and the theme is also Viva la Resistencia, and that is taking place September 13th at Gloria Molina Park. We're going to have lucha libre, fantastic artists, vendors, and fun activities for your family, and it's all free, so make sure you come on by. And again, if you haven't taken a moment to check out the art, it's a beautiful representation of what resistance looks like in different forms, in photography, through paintings, through items such as t-shirts, as well as representing different generations and their type of resistance. So I welcome you all. I welcome everybody. It's free. It's going to be all throughout the month of September, and I want to thank Artura Art Gallery in Lincoln Heights and Council District 1 for curating this phenomenal exhibit. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Girado, do you have a comment? An announcement?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to announce that there is an art exhibit also at the gallery that Councilmember Hernandez is putting forth, and I forgot that I wanted to give comments for item 8. That's what I was actually coming up to talk about, if I may make comments on item 8. Sorry.
You were supposed to make comments on item 8?
Yes.
Do you want to make those comments now during the announcement?
Yes, please. Okay, please.
Well, she's just making a general announcement.
Yeah.
So these are...you're fine making them up, so the vote, we're not going to reconsider as all? That's...
Yeah, we don't need to redo the vote. I could just speak.
Please, go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. And so, you know, this motion is between me and Councilmember Price for immigration-related financial assistance, and despite the motion not having been acted on yet, EWDD and CAO submitted reports pursuant to the motion to ask for more information, and EWDD actually recommended launching the DTLA Resilient Legacy Business Grant to support 130 existing DTLA legacy businesses within the curfew map with $5,000 in cash grants. They're also leveraging L.A. rise in youth jobs corps to support the graffiti removal from all the things that have happened. And the CAO additionally highlighted a program that CIFD put forth to provide cash assistance. And the instruction that came out of EDJ was for CIFD to report on cash assistance, including conversations with philanthropy and, you know, a micro enterprise grant lottery with EWDD and CIFD. And this is an example of departments coming together, taking initiative. You know, initially, when we brought this motion forward, there was no money that could be found by the CAO, but I really commend these departments for making something happen.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Girado, and that's really, I think it's one of the few instances I've heard of departments proactively submitting reports, and I imagine that that's due to the diligence of you and your fellow council members in pushing that forward. So thank you. Councilmember Padilla.
Good morning, council members. Today, I just wanted to stand and make a...for all of my Sun Valley community members who are watching and following, I just wanted to let them know that items 21, 25, and 26 are for you. I want to thank everyone who attended from Sun Valley, the town hall that we had related to potentially constructing tiny homes at our underutilized MetroLink station. They told us what their fears were, what they were excited about, and what else they'd like to see, and what would make them feel like it could be a better project, and these motions indicate exactly that feedback. So for those that are watching, like I said, these are for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla. I'm sure the community will be glad to hear that they're being listened to. Other members, announcements? Nope. Okay, seeing none, please rise for adjourning motions. And if I could get everyone in the chambers to rise, if you're able. Members, any adjourning motions on my left? Any adjourning motions on my right? Okay, seeing none. An efficient meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
The commitment and the love of the Southside Church of Christ family. And so with that, congratulations, everybody. I can't wait to get downstairs with my scissors and cut the ribbon on this building once and for all.
Thanks, Council President. Appreciate it, and thanks for all your support, particularly to staff. Thanks so much.
My name is Saki Middleton. I'm the president of John Stanley. John Stanley is a private real estate development company focused on multifamily housing. Wanted to talk specifically about the project today and kind of give you an overview of what we have here and what you're going to see as you walk around. So Serenee is a public-private partnership between the City of Los Angeles and us as developers, Southside and John Stanley. It's a faith-based partnership with Southside Church of Christ, and Serenee is 50 units, seniors, permanent supportive housing, and independent...